I'd like to call Riverside Township Board of Trustees. Meeting for October 8th, 2013 to order. John, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call to the board.
Trustee Gezman?
Here.
Trustee Kowitsky?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Artler?
Here.
Supervisor Tusher?
Here.
Let the record note, Clerk Blau was also in attendance.
Do I hear our motion to approve the minutes of September 10th, 2013?
Second, second motion.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kowitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do I hear approval of the minutes of September 18th, 2013, special meeting?
So moved.
Do I get a half a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitsky?
I'd like to abstain since I wasn't present.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Any communications?
Yes, there are a few. One is to save a date notice. It's from Pillars. They're having their Bollywood Ball, Film, Fashion and Fantasy, on Saturday evening, January 25th, at the Westin Hotel. It says to purchase tickets, go onto their website or call. I will leave this in the office in case anybody's interested in it.
Get it up on that bulletin board.
Okay. Also, we got a nice thank you letter from Sue Frampton for participating in the Autumn Fest Chili Cook-Off. She thanks us for our donation of the inflatables for the children, and it was very nice that they got to go on them without having to pay for them. And she appreciates, and she said the whole township and village of North Riverside thanked us for making our donation to them and participating in the Chili Cook-Off. It was a very nice event.
Leanne's decorations and chili were outstanding.
Arby's?
Leanne's decorations. She decorated our booth, and her chili were outstanding.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we know who won?
It was...
The kids from Arby's.
Arby's was one of the winners as the junior chef, and the public, the judges' choice award was from the Public Works Department. And the winner of the scarecrow contest was the Administration Department. It was a very nice event. For those of you who have not been there, it's really, it's nice. And most of the people really enjoy it, and then they have, in addition to that, they have for the children, they could make pumpkins and...
The fireworks were spectacular.
Oh, yeah, they were.
Oh, my gosh, they were beautiful.
Okay, visitors' remarks. No visitors, no remarks. I have no report. Trustees' report.
No?
No.
None?
I don't have a report, but I have a question.
Yeah.
Since it's not anywhere else on the agenda, I could bring it up. I have not seen come through on any of the agendas in the last few months anything on the bridge repairs that we talked about several months ago, or the road situation in the world.
Okay, the bridge repairs, there were no real repairs that had been done. They cleaned them all off, is what it was. It didn't need painting, just needed a good scrubbing, which I had the custodians do. Replaced one or two of the clips. The concrete thing, I cannot find a concrete guy, because it's just surface, okay, that goes along with the prevailing wage. And the small independents don't even know what that is, as usual. So...
So it didn't require, you thought everything could be done by our people?
Yeah, except for the concrete, the little patching here and there, which is nothing, really.
Okay.
Okay.
And what happened with the road and the lawn that...
The what?
The road and the lawn that the village wanted, was suggesting that...
They wanted to buy it, yeah. Haven't heard back from them. Have not heard a thing from them.
What did we, how did you respond to their first inquiry? What did we say?
I don't know, it's been a while. Basically something like, you know, as long as it's built to the standard of what we have put in as a street, you know, and I can, you know, just, and I'll give you the specs from when we have the street done.
Well, they were suggesting that we should repair it, and then...
Turn it over.
Turn it over. Did they say something then about that maybe they would take care of it?
That was a long time ago, then they came back and said they wanted to buy it.
And they would repair it?
Yeah, as far as I know, yeah. Because we aren't going to repair it for them.
Well, has it been repaired?
No.
No.
How bad is it, is it needed to be repaired?
Well, depending on how many trucks, heavy trucks they go to over.
I looked at it, and there's some cracks in it, but it's certainly not desperate or would cause an accident, in my view.
I mean, and they're the only ones that use that.
Yeah, just the little area from the road to into the gates.
Yeah, the 39th Street.
Well, I guess we'll have to wait for their response.
Yeah.
See what they want to do.
I'm sure they were just asking and hoping, oh, yeah, we'll do it, you know.
Well, if they buy it, they can repair it.
Pardon me?
If they buy it, they can repair it.
Yeah. A dollar down and that's it.
That's right. There we go.
Okay.
Mental health board reports are in the packet.
Yeah.
Do you have anything to say yet about it? Since you're here?
No, you can expect, we have a meeting next week, and on our agenda is the levy, so we probably will have something to present to the board, to this board after that meeting.
I got the CPI, I think it was 1.7. Last year it was 1.5. I printed out the sheet that they...
The edit requ...
The edit report.
So we have the final...
It's in the box, yeah, for the mental health board, right.
Oh, but what about for the township?
I've got that, I just printed that off today.
Okay. Because that shows us what was actually extended to us.
Right. We have, we can go line by line if you want, or, you know, my suggestion, okay, and we could hold a special meeting, it's one suggestion, and our suggestion is we hold it at the same or we go down to get it closer, like Wayne, Wayne likes to have closer from the levy to the actual, our actual spending, and I also put in a report of what we have spent up through March 31st, which would help us. Do I hear a motion to hold a special meeting?
When does this have to be submitted?
December, I think.
Right, we have to do an estimate next month in November, and then in December submit it. You have to adopt it and submit it by December, the last Tuesday in December. Yeah, but you have to estimate it 20 days before you adopt it, at least.
So, would you like to hold a special meeting so we can go almost line by line?
Well, seems like we might need to do that. I mean, it'd be nice to have the edit reports to see what was actually extended.
Okay, if...
And, you know, if that is for sure the CPI, the 1.7, you know, take a look at all of this, and then next week we should have the mental health board request, too, and we can incorporate that.
So then we can say is the 8th, your meeting is the 16th? Mental health board?
Wednesday, is that next Wednesday?
Yeah, it's the 16th.
Okay.
Yeah, because today's the 8th, it'd be 3rd Wednesday, the 16th. Would you like to hold it on Thursday, the 17th?
No.
Pardon me?
I'll be out of town.
Okay.
You're talking November?
No, October.
About the week of the 20th? Sunday's the 20th.
Yeah.
You got 21, 22, 23?
I can do 21 or 23.
Anybody got problems with Monday, the 21st, or Wednesday, the 23rd?
I don't have my calendar, I didn't bring it, but...
I can't hear you.
I don't have my calendar, but I think that either one of those would work. I can call you.
Okay.
21...
21 would work for me.
23, huh?
Either 21 or 23. And if that doesn't work, I can do Tuesday, too, if that doesn't work for me.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll call you, Rich.
Yeah, do it as soon as you can.
Okay.
Like tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Wednesday.
But make sure we get those reports.
Yeah.
You know, that we get copies of those.
I'll put them in the box.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So the special meeting then will go through the levy line by line?
Pardon me?
The special meeting will go through the levy...
Line by line, basically. Let's see, 214 meeting dates on holiday. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the 2014 Township meeting dates on holidays.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed.
Just one question, I'm looking at this November again, it's on the 3rd Tuesday, that was because of the Washington Seminar thing or whatever, do they still do that or no?
Springfield.
Oh, the Springfield.
Springfield.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, yes, the Fall Conference and the Springfield, it's always like the second week in November.
No, it's all...
Although, is anyone else thinking about going this year besides me?
I'm not.
You know, if I'm the only one going, you know, it doesn't really matter, you have a quorum.
I'm considering going.
This year, and possibly so that...
John, Mary Brown?
For this year, no, I have a conflicting...
Well, we'll have a, we'll have a quorum then.
But I want, I have a conflicting work.
Oh, so you won't make that meeting either?
Not the 2nd Tuesday, I'll be, but are we talking this year, right?
Yes.
So, November, it's moved to the 3rd Thursday.
Yeah.
No, we're talking, we're talking next year.
I think we're kind of talking both, but this year it's fine. This is fine, because we took that into consideration last year.
Right, this is 2014 calendar.
And the 11th, eh...
So nobody really knows what they're doing next year yet, so you might as well leave it on the 3rd Tuesday. We have to anyway, we just approved it.
The next year's meeting will probably be the 11th through the 13th, probably.
Anyway, it shouldn't be a problem.
No, it can't change in the next year at this point.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a problem.
Letter from Richard Khan about the tax objections. Approximately $3,400 for 2005 and $2,900 for 2006, and as usual, it's cheaper to pay that than to have attorneys fight it. All roll call votes to approve it?
Is there a motion made?
Yes.
Seconded? I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kowitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, holiday turkeys and hams for the food pantry recipients. For 2012 Thanksgiving were 48 hams, 48 turkeys, and Christmas was 58 hams, 58 turkeys.
You know, I have some reservations about this, because I think the system is being abused. I don't know all these people are deserving of these hams, turkeys and hams.
Well, GA clients, they come in and, you know, they're not abusing it, because they're general assistants, we know they are. Now...
That's what I mean, because I was here one day when some guy called up and says, "Am I ham ready?" I mean, come on.
Yeah, I know, they, they act like that, John.
Yeah, they act like they're entitled.
You know, and if they're...
What are the prerequisites, what are the requirements?
Food pantry requirements, all you have to do is live in the township.
So it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what you do if you're unemployed, or if you're in the upper income bracket?
Right, as long as you live in the township.
I think you gotta, I think you gotta tone that down a little bit, or put some hard requirements in there so that...
Well, let's think about it and change it for next year then.
You have to show some type of hardship, not just being a resident. I mean, that's taxpayer money going out the door, because somebody's, "Well, gimme my ham," you know.
Yeah, well, no, I agree with you, but this is the way it's been set up.
I know, well...
All these years.
I think we've got to tighten the belt there.
How would you suggest they show hardship?
I, what I'm suggesting is to have some type of tighter requirements to get that ham or turkey, to prove some type of hardship, that you deserve this.
You let me know what type of hardship...
Well, probably, well, what are the requirements on general assistance? Can't we go something parallel to that? They have to prove that they're unemployed or...
Right. Or waiting, you know. Well, then if the only person we're going to give them to are the general assistance people?
Well, I'm sure there's some residents who are not in general assistance, are not asking for it.
Well, are you saying they got to prove that they make so much money per year?
That's a consideration.
Well, put it down in writing and we'll, we'll talk about it.
I mean, not, not make more than so much.
Put it down in writing, well, okay?
All right.
No, your ideas, I mean, you know. Anybody else have any ideas? Wayne, you look like you're ready to say something.
I was going to say that when you consider there's 15,000 people that we're representing, this is a very modest number.
Okay, but these 15,000 people are paying for this.
I know.
And now, do they want their money being spent in such a manner, where anybody who lives in the township can just walk in and say, "Gimme."
Some other, I don't know if you know, or been, talked to other townships, but other townships have a huge demand while we're in a very modest numbers here.
Well, it doesn't matter, if there's a huge demand, are they deserving to get this type of thing? You know, I mean, you just can't toss the money out the window like that. If they can afford to go out and buy a ham or a turkey, don't come here and look for a freebie. That's my point. You know, if they're not deserving or showing hardship or something for that, don't come in here and ask for it. Don't do that to the other taxpayers, that's not fair to them.
Most people who, who get the ham and turkey are already been getting, have been on the food pantry list for a long, long time.
All right, and what are the requirements of the food pantry? Again, just showing residence?
But aren't most of those people unemployed?
How do we know if all they have to do is...
We don't ask them.
You don't ask them, they just come in, show residency and give them food.
If they're unemployed, they're being in general assistance.
I really think we have to revisit all of this. I think we're throwing a lot of money out the window with this and giving it to people that, that just don't deserve it. I don't mind helping people that are seeing tough times and unemployed and everything, but when I'm standing in an office and I hear a guy call up and say, "Is my ham ready?" And the red flag goes up. Sorry, you know, I think this has to be revisited, and we got to tighten this up to give it to the people, to the needy who really are entitled, not entitled, but who need assistance, not just anybody coming in. I live here, gimme a turkey. It isn't right, I'm sorry, I don't agree with that.
Well, you're going to expect us to go through and double check to make sure that they only make 15, $20,000 a year?
Well, they're going to have to come in here with some type of hard copy proof that they, that they need it. How do you go on unemployment? You got to prove you're unemployed, right? Well, then they, then they should come in here with something saying, "I am unemployed, here's the paperwork," or something on it to show it.
You can't use unemployment.
Well, I'm not, okay, whatever, my point is, show that you need this.
Your W-2s or...
W-2 something. You know, I mean, this, this is crazy, I mean, you know, this, this whole country is going in that direction, just gimme, gimme, gimme. Half of this country is on some type of government assistance, half. And all we're doing is adding to that with giving out to people like that who are working and don't deserve it. That's, that's my point, and I think it's not fair to the rest of the taxpayers.
Come on, with some ideas, we can, we can talk about it and change it.
Okay, I would like to.
The board approves, I mean, you know.
I think what we're going on, that basis we're going on is that people say they need it, and so we're, you know, giving it to them. And maybe you're right, maybe they don't need it.
That's right. Show us that you need it.
Yeah.
But as Wayne says, our numbers aren't huge.
They're...
I mean, you're talking, why didn't you say 58?
Compared to the other...
There are, there are some food pantry people that try to go through each bag and pick out what they want, who say, "No, you can't do that."
Yeah, see, that's what I mean, they're abusing the system, and we're a small township.
And then they get upset.
Pardon, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
And we're a small township, so that, therefore, I would, I would assume that the numbers would be lower, people looking for this stuff, because we have fewer residents than most other townships.
Yeah, I know. I think 58 is not a bad number.
It certainly isn't.
Might even be less, for all I know, you know, because it fluctuates, this is what was last year, you know.
We're talking about small sums of money here.
You know what, Rich, what, what do you think about, call like Carol Teshki at Main Township, she's the supervisor, and ask her what their conditions are. I know, or somebody at Palatine, or, oh, Niles, they have huge food pantries.
They do.
They give a ton of food out a year.
All right, fine.
See what their conditions are, just to...
Good, I think, I think that's a good start. I don't care if it's five people, because I was in the office, too, and I was told last year that this woman came in and found out about the, the free turkeys and free hams, and told all of her neighbors, they were all coming in here for it. They're all working, they, they don't, they don't need that. I, I don't care, I hate to see people just coming in on other people's dime and getting free turkeys and hams, it isn't fair. I don't care if it's two people or 2,000 people.
Could I make a suggestion, that possibly we go to some of the organizations, or the churches in the area, and ask them to, for a list of some people that aren't really in need of this assistance, and we help them and their families instead of, in addition, we probably would have to maintain some type of a list here, but in addition to it, so we could really help some needy people that maybe are not aware of assistance that they can receive here.
Okay, are these churches or organizations, do they check these people out, that they need the assistance?
Well, I would think if they're parishioner, that they would be aware of their situation more than we would be, you know, John, because they're, most parishes are...
All right, then why don't we go to some of these organizations and give the turkeys and hams to them, if they know that these people are truly needy and say, "This is coming from Riverside Township," rather than us setting up a whole system here to find out whether they're really needy enough to, to get freebies like that. I just don't, I just don't like people abusing the system, it's going on in this country way too much, way too much, and I don't care if it's, if it's two hams, you know. If you're abusing the system, you don't get it. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
So do I approve of ordering these turkeys and hams for Thanksgiving and Christmas?
I make a motion, you order the turkeys and hams as you have expressed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call. Any question, other questions, concerns? Roll call.
Rich, could you give me those figures one more time? It's Thanksgiving was 48, and Christmas was 58? Thank you.
So I assume if we're, if we're voting on this, you're not going to need any further input from me?
Yeah, I'm going to need your ideas about...
Well, you're, you're approving this.
Well, no, for next year.
We can't change now.
For next year, John.
You can't change for what's coming up now.
Why not?
It's like tomorrow.
What's tomorrow? Thanksgiving's more than a month away.
Anyway, we're, we're going ahead with this year, and we're thinking about considering changing it for the future.
Roll call.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
No.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
I hear they're community projects, you know, ideas from us. I mean, you know, I come up with a few, looked into it other places, you know, like art classes, I haven't looked into that, but, you know, bridge experiments, they've already got bridge in chess classes, they already have chess classes. Think of magic trick instructions, we'd have to pay somebody. Babysitting classes, I'm looking into that, that's a CPR, but it's given once, very seldom by the Village Riverside Fire Department, but maybe we, you know, it's like certification for babysitters. Come up with other stuff. This is just to give you an idea, programs we can come up with for the township. Do you have ideas, and that you've investigated it by next meeting? Okay. Thank you. North Riverside Friends of Library, they're presenting a check on November 2nd at 10:30, which is Saturday, November 2nd?
Yes, so Saturday.
Right. It was through their reading program for kids. They, I guess the kids got pledges, if they read, read somebody books, somebody would pledge a dollar, $2, whatever, or a bulk or something. So they raised money for the food pantry. They want to present it on November 2nd to the board or any one of us. I will be there to accept.
Where, at the library?
At the North Riverside Library, 10:30 a.m. I'm going to give out a certificate of appreciation to the Friends of the Library for them also.
What day, what week is that?
Saturday.
Pardon me, John?
Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday, November 2nd.
So it'll be at the North Riverside Library, and they'll present us a check, or the township a check...
To the Riverside...
Food pantry.
Township food pantry.
Pantry, okay. And you'll give them a certificate of appreciation.
Okay. Okay. Any... No visitors, so there's no other further remarks. Approval warrants.
Okay. I have a motion that the board approve and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, October two thousand thirteen, in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars, seven cents, as presented to the board this eighth day of October, two thousand thirteen.
Second motion.
Any questions, concerns?
Yes.
Yeah.
The invoice for preparation of that one-page treasurer's report was two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Sounded kind of high to me. It said, "Reformat and restate the report," and I...
And this is by...
Our accountants. And...
Wait a minute. When you say "our accountant," which one?
Well, Demonti.
Demonti, okay.
Demonti, yeah. I couldn't understand why they'd have to restate and reformat it, particularly since they prepared the report last year. Last year, the amount was two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for that report.
How much was it?
Two four seven five.
And what's it now?
Two five five zero. I mean, they indicate that there were email conferences and back simile conferences and changes and preparation of the final report. I don't know. It seems steep to me. Did anyone else look at that and think that that was kind of unusual?
It was a little unusual, but, you know, it could be salaries going up or something like that, you know? But, you know, I'll call... I'll call Jean Demonti, and I'll leave the answer in her box whenever I get it from her, okay?
I'll put a copy in my box also.
Yeah, I'll pull a copy in everybody's box.
It just seemed like a lot to me. Now, I guess, you know, I haven't been... I don't work in an accounting firm, and maybe I don't know what... It just... For a one-page report, I know there's more involved than just filling in some numbers. But John used to do it. Wayne used to do it.
Well, when you consider the cost of the audit against that, uh...
The audit seems like it was very reasonable.
Why, I should say.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. The amount that's shown on here includes the monthly work, too.
Okay.
The eleven fifty, I think it is, for the usual monthly work.
I hope so.
No, no, it does. It does. Anyway, that was my only comment.
Any others? Roll call.
Trustee Giesmann?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Erthler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Next, a motion that the board ratify and approve payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, October two thousand thirteen, in the amount of eight hundred eighty-eight dollars, twenty-six cents. Payroll warrant, October two thousand thirteen, in the amount of sixteen thousand thirty-seven dollars, twenty-two cents. Health warrant, October two thousand thirteen, in the amount of one thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars, twenty-one cents. Monthly filings, October two thousand thirteen, in the amount of three thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars, forty-six cents. Grants, October two thousand thirteen, in the amount of six thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars. General assistance warrant, October two thousand thirteen, in the amount of four thousand two hundred dollars. Township radio players warrant, October two thousand thirteen, in the amount of one hundred twenty dollars. And food pantry warrant, October two thousand thirteen, in the amount of two hundred sixty-five dollars. All of the above as presented to the board this eighth day of October, two thousand thirteen.
Second motion.
Questions, concerns? Did you get the updated one from ten-seven? For ten... General warrant, ten thousand seven sixteen ninety-seven? Okay, because you're going real quick.
Oh, sorry. Yes. No, no, no.
Okay. I just want to make sure you included that in there. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trustee Erthler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesmann?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carrying.
No further comments from supervisor. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Before you adjourn, a couple things on the financial reports. If you could take a look at the second page of the first one on the general town fund, the statement of revenues and expenditures and cash flow.
I can hear you, Anne.
The first report, statement of revenue and expenditures on cash flow, general town fund, page two. Okay, under contractual services. Senior citizens. I think that five thousand dollars that we approved for Riverside Township seniors got put in the wrong line item. It was not removed.
Riverside Township seniors or North Riverside or both?
No, no, no. It's showing up under senior citizens. See, the amount that came out last month was five thousand fifty-six dollars, forty-nine cents. I think that five thousand of that should be under Riverside Township seniors, because that was the grant.
Sure.
Yeah. And when I went through the bills and things, I did mark, because it was incorrectly noted to begin with, but I did change the line item on that, but maybe they didn't catch it. I don't know. At any rate, that should be corrected. And then on the next page...
Wait a minute. You went very quickly. What was that in?
Just that the five thousand should be under Riverside Township seniors, not under...
Senior citizens?
Senior citizens, yeah.
Okay.
Five of that amount. The fifty-six forty...
And then you said something else.
That's one. My next one...
Well, finish what you're going to say. She corrected it on the invoice, but they apparently didn't see the correction.
Pick it up, on the warrant. I adjusted it on the warrant, but maybe it... Who knows what? But anyway, that needs to be moved. And then the next change, the next thing I have is, on Fran's budget, a statement for the assessor, if you look at other expenses, we... Some of us expected this might be a problem under miscellaneous expense. That got left in there, miscellaneous expense with a zero appropriation. Well, there's forty-two dollars sitting there that is, you know, shouldn't be.
Should be zero.
Well, Fran apparently spent forty-two dollars somehow, and it got charged to miscellaneous, but there really is no miscellaneous line item. Remember with the discussion?
Yeah.
The discussion we had, well, apparently the line item didn't get removed, so she charged something. Forty-two dollars, not a lot of lot, you know, money, but it's there. I don't know. We're going to have to move that somewhere. Because there is no appropriation for that line item. So we're going to have to do one of those transfers probably next month.
Looks like office supplies to me.
Yeah. I don't know what it was, and I'm sorry I didn't catch it, but... Because we've had miscellaneous for so many years, but anyway...
Yeah, that would be out of there.
Yeah, I think that needs to be moved, and it could be moved, as Wayne says, to office supplies. It's probably what it was, anyway.
Sure.
We had, on the general assistance fund, there was...
Wait a minute. Okay.
Under revenues, food pantry donations were way over what we put in there for the budget. But I don't think there's any way to really correct that without revising the budget. See that, Wayne?
Yes.
See, we appropriated six hundred dollars, but we're already, you know, a thousand twenty-one dollars over that. And then we're getting more next week. So we're going to be way... But I don't think you can really... I don't think you can do anything with that.
No, that's okay.
Yeah. Next year.
Well, we just don't buy those turkeys and hams, and that'll take that out of the food.
Next year, we'll put more in there.
Okay.
So I guess there's only that one change. So Wayne, would you want to do that? You usually do those corrections.
Okay.
I don't know, Rich, unless you're going to do it.
Yeah, I love Wayne doing it.
All right.
We should probably, you know, have one for next month.
Okay, I'll make the change.
It's a minor thing, but it's, you know, not right.
Anything else?
No.
Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.